Good evening. This is the June 19th meeting of the Township Committee. Notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Sun, and Two River Times, and by posting at the Middletown Township Municipal Building and filing with the Township Clerk, all on January 5th, 2023. Committeeman Clark.
Here.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Here.
Committeeman Sedimbrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide defending our Constitution, freedoms, and way of life. The first item on tonight's agenda, we have the administration of oath of office. First, we have the swearing-in of police officers. At this time, I would like to invite Officer Aiden Carey to come to the front of the room
Yeah. Say so. Ready? Raise your right hand towards the camera. Repeat after me. I, Aiden Carey.
I, Aiden Carey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of police officer.
Police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help you God.
So help you God.
Congratulations, Aiden. Raven?
One, two. Okay. At this time, I would like to invite Officer William Perez and his family to the front of the room to join Mayor Perry.
I, William Perez. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help you God.
So help you God.
Congratulations.
Okay. So, at this time, I would like to invite Officer Allison Ruane and her family to the front of the room to join Mayor Perry. At this time, we have the swearing-in of Special Law Enforcement Officers Class One. I would like to invite Haley Calucci, James Davis II, Charles Honan, Michelle Quinones Smith, Liam Smith, and Sean Sullivan to join Mayor Perry at the front of the room.
With the body cam. The only ugly bug who's gonna see with that body cam is me, Perry. Ready? Raise your right hands. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
Decide it's not doing its great. Thank God for the females up here, okay? Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties of.
All of the duties of.
Police officer.
Police officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help you God.
So help you God.
Congratulations.
One, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations.
I will say, I might start feeling old one day, looking at all the young guys. Yeah. What? Yeah, quickly. It was the newest ever achievement spoke up first. So now.
At this time, I would like to invite Officer Allison Ruane and her family to the front of the room to join Mayor Perry.
I, Allison Ruane.
I, Allison.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help you God.
So help you God.
Congratulations, Aiden. I will say, I might start feeling old one day, looking at all the young guys. Yeah. What? Yeah, quickly. It was the newest ever achievement spoke up first. So now.
At this time, I would like to invite Officer Allison Ruane and her family to the front of the room to join Mayor Perry.
I, Allison Ruane.
I, Allison.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties of.
All of the duties of.
Police officer.
Police officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help you God.
So help you God.
Congratulations.
Okay. So, at this time, we have Janet Dellen to make a presentation regarding this space.
Thanks, Karen. And everyone. Tonight's application. Tonight's application is for Monmouth County Youthful Park Improvement Grant. It's a little bit different this year. Normally, we apply in the fall, and normally, the county will award up to $250,000. They changed it, and now this year, they moved the application deadline up a little bit, and they're also increasing the funding, so they're gonna award up to $500,000 for this project. Here's a little bit of our past history. We do have a good track record, you know, if I intended. If you look up on the screen, you'll see from 2020 through 2022, we focused heavily on McMan Park. We did a Phase One. It actually wasn't selected in 2020. We revitalized, revamped the program. We applied in 2021. We did receive it. That's for a six football court, some shade structures where the old rural hockey was. And then in 2022, we decided to apply again for McMan to continue the forward progress. For that, we drew a tennis court and a basketball court at McMan. Prior to that, in 2018, oh, sorry, 2019, we did the Norby Park Soccer Complex, which holds four small-sized soccer fields, two full-sized fields, and one practice baseball field. And then prior to that, 2017, we did the Freudian Hall of Player Renovations. So you see, we have a pretty good track record with this very application. So for 2023, we decided to do a baseball project. We haven't done baseball in a large amount of times. We thought it was definitely due. What we decided to do in working with, talking with one of the local leagues, MYA, the Middletown Youth Athletic Association, we decided we'd like to turf one of our baseball fields. Also included in that would be a combination 4660 and 5070 baseball field, subsurface drainage improvements fencing, an open concept dugout plan, aluminum bleachers with concrete pads, backstop, two batting cages, stone parking area, as well as adding additional field lighting to this particular field. Before you actually continue, you can take this off. Thanks. So this is the plan here. When you come into the park, you come into the park from the bottom right, where the little square is calling out for the engineers. You come up Market Street, make a left, and if you notice, this is actually field three. It wasn't 90-foot field. Again, we're proposing to put it to a 4660-5070 combo, leaving Campbell Field, the little forward behind it untouched. The little green rectangle is kind of going off at an angle. Those are the two proposed batting cages, and just behind that, if you're familiar with that park, you'll know that parking there is difficult at times. We are proposing to improve that parking a little bit there. Some of the benefits for this, like I said right from the beginning, we have a ton of baseball projects since Clearwater Fields, which predates many of us in this room. And like I said, MYA is in support of the project. They're actually hosting the District Sectional and State All-Star Games this summer at Bodman Park. So in the future, having a beautiful facility to showcase this will continue to put Middletown on the map as having awesome quality sports fields. Also, artificial turf field will help reduce field maintenance. Energy's gonna be put towards other facilities, as well as provide a place for games to be played with little to no field prep after a rainstorm, which would be really important for the baseball league. Artificial turf will also allow children to practice and experience both grass and synthetic turf fields, which will better prepare them as they advance in baseball. Additional 4660-5078 fields, which actually is the largest age group that play in recreational and travel sports, baseball and softball. Again, additional lighted field to host more night games, two batting cages, which will be available to the public and local teams, and improved parking lot, will hold more cars than the heavily used park. For the budget, the estimates that we got for this, for the hard cost, is $1,694,175 and $40,000, making the total project $1,834,175. The grant going up to $500,000 means that we would be requesting $1,334,175 in capital to match for 2020. I'm sorry, John, if you want to go back two slides? Perfect. And that concludes it. Any questions?
Any questions from the Township Committee? Yes.
I'm sorry, just one quick one. The other field that's existing currently, that also has a batting cage, correct?
Yeah, there's two bats. Look, it's not attached to the field. There are two batting cages. The leaf put them in, so they're not generally open to the public. There's more access, it's more access for the leaves. But the additional two batting cages that we would put up there are, would be accessible to the public.
And Janet, this is obviously open space eligible. We can utilize our open space trust fund to pay for this, correct?
Correct.
Any other comments from the Township Committee?
Those that are graduating, congratulations. Those that are gonna be here for, uh, for next year, let's bring it back and make it three in a row, alright? So on behalf of the township committee, I want to congratulate Middletown High School North boys track and field athletes on winning the NJ SIAA Central Jersey Group Three State Sectional Champions- Championship for your team's second championship i- in a row. Earning back-to-back state titles is an incredibly impressive accomplishment that requires a lot of hard work, dedication, and talent. And we are very honored and proud to recognize your team's ever-growing legacy, a real legacy, and join you in celebrating this outstanding achievement. Jeff, John, congratulations. Alright, I think we're into the... Yeah? Well, I should say Mike, excuse me.
No, I don't think so.
Mike's got, Mike's got a real deal there.
Thank you so much.
You gonna be able to get us all in there, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, one, two, three. If you please stay from your parents, you guys have a different thing. Congratulations.
He can even look at that one, he knew it was good. Alright guys, congratulations, give it up another round, please.
Next, we have a proclamation recognizing July tenth, twenty twenty-three as World Airway Disorders Day in the township of Middletown. Next item on tonight's agenda, we have the approval of minutes for the May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting. Committeeman Clark?
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz? Committeeman Sedeburn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hyde?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
Next on tonight's agenda, we do have an open space public hearing, Monmouth County Open Space Grant Application for Bodman Park Baseball Improvements.
As Janet's walking up, we're just gonna take a minute. Alright, Karen.
Okay, so at this time, we have Janet Dellen to make a presentation regarding this space.
Thanks, Karen. And Eric, everyone. Tonight's application, the Monmouth County Youthful Park Improvement Grant, it's a little bit different this year. Normally, we apply in the fall, and normally, the county will award up to $250,000. They changed it, and now this year, they moved the application deadline up a little bit, and they're also increasing the fundings, so they're gonna award up to $500,000 for this project. Here's a little bit of our past history. We do have a good track record, you know, if I intended. If you look up on the screen, you'll see from two, from twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two, we focused heavily on McMan Park. We did a phase one. It actually wasn't selected in twenty twenty. We revitalized, revamped the program. We applied in twenty twenty-one, we did receive it. That's for a six football court, some shade structures where the old Royal Hockey was. And then in twenty twenty-two, we decided to apply again for McMan to continue the forward progress. For that, we drew the tennis courts and the basketball courts at McMan. Prior to that, in two thousand eighteen, oh, sorry, two thousand nineteen, we did the Norman Park Soccer Complex, which holds four small-sized soccer fields, two full-sized fields, and one practice baseball field. And then prior to that, two thousand seventeen, we did the Freudian Hall of Player Renovations. So you see, we have a pretty good track record with this very application. So for twenty twenty-three, we decided to do a baseball project. We haven't done baseball in a large amount of times, so we thought it was definitely due. What we decided to do in working with, talking with one of the local leagues, MYA, the Middletown Youth Athletic Association, we decided we'd like to turf one of our baseball fields. Also included in that would be a combination forty-six sixty and fifty seventy baseball field, the subsurface drainage improvements fencing, an open concept dugout plan, aluminum bleachers with concrete pads, backstop, two batting cages, stone parking area, as well as adding additional field lighting to this, to this particular field. Um, before you, actually, you can continue, you can take it aside. Thanks. So this is the plan here. When you come into the park, you come into the park from the bottom right, where the little square is calling out for the engineers. You come up on Market Street, make a left, and if you notice, this is actually filled through. It wasn't ninety-foot field. Again, we're proposing to put it to a forty-six sixty, fifty seventy combo, and leaving Campbell Field, the little forward behind it untouched. The little green rectangle is kinda going off at an angle. Those are the two proposed batting cages. And just behind that, if you're familiar with that park, you'll know that parking there is difficult at times. We are proposing to improve that parking a little bit there. Some of the benefits for this, like I said right from the beginning, we haven't done a baseball project since Clearwater Fields, which predates many of us in this room. And like I said, MYA is in support of the project. They're actually hosting the District Sectional and State All-Star Games this summer at Bodman Park. So in the future, having a beautiful facility to showcase this will continue to put Middletown on the map as having awesome, quality sports fields. Also, artificial turf field will help reduce field maintenance. Energy's gonna be put towards other facilities as well as provide a place for games to be played with little to no field prep after a rainstorm, which would be really important for the baseball leagues. Artificial turf will also allow children to practice and experience both grass and synthetic turf fields, which will better prepare them as they advance in baseball. Additional forty-six sixty, fifty seventy fields, which actually is the largest age group that play in recreational and travel sports, baseball and softball. Again, additional lighted field to host more night games. Two batting cages, which will be available to the public and local teams, and improved parking lot, will hold more cars than the heavily used park. For the budget, the estimates that we got for this, for the hard cost, is one million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-five, and forty thousand dollars, making the total project one million, eight hundred and thirty-four, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. The grant going up to $500,000 means that we would be requesting one, one million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-five in capital to match for twenty twenty. I'm sorry, John, if you wanna go back two slides? Perfect, and that concludes it. Ready questions?
Any questions from the township committee? Yes?
I'm sorry, just one quick one. The, um, the, the other field that's existing currently, that also has a batting cage, correct?
Yeah, there's two batting, so that's not attached to the field. There are two batting cages, the league put them in, so they're not generally open to the public. You're more access, it's more access for the leagues. But the, the additional two batting cages that we would put up there are, would be accessible to the public.
And Janet, this, this is obviously open space budget eligible. We can, we can utilize our open space trust fund to pay for this, correct?
Correct.
Uh, any other comments from the township committee? Questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll open it up for public comment. Any member of the public who should make a public comment about the Monmouth County Open Space Grant Application for Bodman Park Baseball Improvements? John, go ahead.
That's Billy Ninety-One, of Robinson. I just had a question about the grant. Would, would there be an AED included in the, in the grant for the fields or for the dugout?
Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry, I just heard the AED, and I was trying to figure out what that was. So actually, we don't have one in any of the parks right now. The leagues do provide them, but there wouldn't be a stationary at this point. I don't think this is a decision to put one stationary in the parks, just yet.
But so the leagues are required to have them?
The leagues have one there, yes.
Okay, and is the reason that we don't have them stationaries because AEDs tend to not do well in the cold?
That's part of the reason. The other part of the reason is that we have a wonderful police force that's local, and that's really quick to respond. We've talked with them, they know that they obviously have the AEDs and all their cars. So we've had this conversation for a few years.
And I think that, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but as a patrol officer is put on, goes out onto, onto their shift, that they take an AED with them, we don't leave them in the vehicles, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Got it, alright. Thanks. Any other member of the public who should make a public comment? Okay, seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve. Second.
Committeeman Clark?
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz?
Yes.
Committeeman Sedeburn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hyde?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Janet. Alright, next up.
Next item on the agenda, we have a public hearing of proposed ordinance two oh two three dash three three seven three, bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $2 million for acquisitions of properties by and for the township of Middletown and the county of Monmouth, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of $1,900,000 in bonds or notes of the township for financing part of the appropriation.
Any member of the public who should speak on public ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash three three seven three? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve. Second.
Committeeman Clark?
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz?
Yes.
Committeeman Sedeburn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hyde?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve ordinance two oh two three, three three seven three on second and final reading.
Next up.
Introduction of proposed ordinances. First, we have two oh two three, three three seven four, and ordinance amending chapter three three six dash two of the Code of the Township of Middletown, governing collection times for solid waste and recycling.
Motion to introduce. Second.
Committeeman Clark?
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz?
Yes.
Committeeman Sedeburn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hyde?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve ordinance two oh two three, three three dash seven four, with the public hearing to be held July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Next, we have ordinance two oh two three, three three seven five, a bond ordinance amending bond ordinance number two oh one nine dash three two seven seven, finally adopted by the Township Committee of the Township of Middletown, New Jersey, on December second, two thousand nineteen.
Motion to introduce.
Committeeman Clark?
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz?
Yes.
Committeeman Sedeburn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hyde?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve two oh two three dash three three seven five on first reading, with a public hearing to be held July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Next, we have ordinance two oh two three, three three seven six, and ordinance authorizing financial agreement upon blocks ten eight eighty-six, lot thirty, one hundred Schultz Drive, with exit one oh nine Urban Renewal Five LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law NJ SA forty A twenty dash one edsec.
Motion to introduce. Second.
Committeeman Clark?
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz?
Yes.
Committeeman Sedeburn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hyde?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve ordinance two oh two three, three three seven six on first reading, with a public hearing to be held July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Next, we have ordinance two oh two three dash three three seven seven, and ordinance governing regulation of short-term rentals of real property and associate amenities.
Motion to introduce.
Committeeman Clark?
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz?
Yes.
Committeeman Sedeburn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hyde?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve ordinance two oh two three dash three three seven seven, with a public hearing to be held July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Next, we have ordinance two oh two three dash three three seven eight, and ordinance permitting and licensing inter, 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 itinerary retail food handling establishments.
Motion to introduce. Second.
Committeeman Clark?
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz?
Yes.
Committeeman Sedeburn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hyde?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve this ordinance on first reading, with a public hearing to be held July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
There was gonna be an amendment to, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah. Uh, thirty-three seventy, uh, thirty-three seventy-nine?
Thirty-three seventy-eight.
I apologize. Just modifying the... Yeah, I'll make, I'll, I'll do a, a motion again. Motion to introduce with an amendment, taking the yearly fee from five hundred to three hundred dollars. Second, I apologize.
Committeeman Clark?
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz?
Yes.
Committeeman Sedeburn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hyde?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve ordinance two oh two three dash three three seven eight, with a public hearing to be held seven seventeen, twenty twenty-three. Next, we have ordinance two oh two three dash three three seven nine, and ordinance amending ordinance number two oh two two dash three three four four, authorizing granting of certain deeds of easement upon portions of township-owned property pursuant to the Raritan Bay and Sandy Hook Bay Hurricane and Storm Drainage Reduction Project for Monmouth, New Jersey, Phase Two, Contract Five.
Motion to introduce. Second.
Committeeman Clark?
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz?
Yes.
Committeeman Sedeburn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hyde?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve two oh two three dash three three seven nine on first reading, with a public hearing to be held July seventeen, twenty twenty-three. At this time, I would like to ask the township committee to adopt a consent agenda that would include resolutions twenty-three...
Eric, what, twenty twenty-three dash, should've been seven, three three eight zero?
That, that wasn't, that was...
I'm looking at the... I will give you a little agenda, swap down my agenda.
Now there's no, okay. So we are adopting now a consent agenda that would include resolutions twenty-three dash one seven nine through twenty-three dash one eighty-five, removing resolution twenty-three dash one eighty-four for a separate vote.
Motion to approve consent agenda. Second.
Committeeman Clark?
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz?
Yes.
Committeeman Sedeburn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hyde?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
This time, we would like to introduce resolution twenty-three dash one eighty-four, Resolution Ratifying Memorandum of Agreement, MOA, with PBA Local One Two Four.
Uh, motion to approve, and I just wanna make a comment very quickly. This is, uh, is a great contract between our PBA and, and our township committee, and, and I wanna thank our PBA President, Mike Royer, our state delegate, delegate Anthony Delta Coma, the professionalism, the courtesy, the, the constant meetings and rescheduling of meetings. But this is a fair contract for our police officers and a fair contract for our taxpayers. And given the fact that both of you are taxpayers, you see that on, on both sides of, of the ledger. And I wanna commend you and thank you very much for the months of negotiating that we went through, years of negotiating that we went through. But I think this is a, a very good contract, so I wanna thank you both very much. Motion to approve. Second.
Committeeman Clark?
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz?
Yes.
Committeeman Sedeburn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hyde?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty-three dash one eighty-four.
Karen, I just wanna invite our PBA President, Mike Royer, and state delegate, delegate Anthony Delta Coma to step forward.
President Mike Royer of the PBA, I had myself and the entire PBA, I thank Mayor Perry, Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Hyde, Councilman Sedeburn, Councilman Clark, Councilwoman Kratz, Long Lake Township Minister, Mark Conaty, especially Deputy, our Chief, Frank Weber, giving us the opportunity. I'm a lifelong resident, my family, I'm a third-generation resident here. We live in one of the safest towns, I don't want to say this country. The support that you guys give us and allow us to do our job the way we do is amazing, and we're just really grateful to have the opportunity to work here, so thank you, David.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Middletown is, is no doubt one of the safest towns in America because of, of individuals like yourselves, and we appreciate it. And, and I do wanna thank Chief Weber, because he obviously was, was very helpful in, in making some adjustments that not only the township preferred, but also the, the members preferred, uh, in getting that into, into the language of this contract. And the fact that it's a five-year contract, uh, I, I hope says to all the members, and it seems by, by the vote, that, uh, we wanna stay one of the safest towns in America for, for a long term. So, thank you, guys. Thank you, Chief. Alright, Karen?
One thing I wanna, I did not include firefighter application in the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve firefighter application for Christopher Roddeman for Community Fire Company?
You okay with that, Dan? Alright, alright. Motion to approve. Second.
Committeeman Clark?
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz?
Yes.
Committeeman Sedeburn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hyde?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries to approve firefighter application. Next on the agenda, we have the Township Committee acting as the ABC issuing authority. Resolution twenty-three dash one eighty-six would be a resolution authorizing the renewal of liquor licenses for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four licensing term.
Motion to approve.
Committeeman Clark?
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz?
Yes.
Committeeman Sedeburn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hyde?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty-three dash one eighty-six. Next on the agenda, we have Township Committee comments.
Committeeman Clark? I'd like to congratulate the North Track team on their success this season. Uh, I got the, I got the chance to watch one of those young men grow up, Jack Chanway. His father, the fire chief in the department, that I've been a member of for a long time, so congratulations to them. Piggybacking on what the mayor said and what our PBA delegates have said, making Middletown safe is, uh, is a priority for all of our first responders, including our police officers who are out most of the time there before just about anybody else. Being able to do the lifesaving awards tonight for our two officers is a testament to the, the type of department that, that we have. Being able to negotiate a contract that's fair for everybody continues to show that commitment to the community, not just in, in your professional capacity responding to calls, but in, in your responsibilities to, to the community, to be the best that you can be. And with, as somebody said, I believe it was the mayor, with the, to the track coach, right? Great leadership turns into great, uh, great things behind it. And you have a great team of leaders that, that help guide this department, and it's turned you guys into great leaders for the PBA and all the rank and file into the best of the best. So appreciate that more than you guys will ever know. That's all I got, too. Thank you. Thank you. Committeeman Clark, uh, Committeeman Sedeburn?
Hey, you're gonna have to start calling me before, right? Committeeman Clark.
Alright.
Um, so...
He takes everything?
Every, alright, so I get, I get...
He copies your list, I think. I saw him, I saw him jotting down a note. Boy, he was cheating.
So a couple of items. Uh, I do wanna congratulate all the new police officers and all the special class one officers as well. The lifesaving valor award, uh, this is when, uh, when a house on fire, I'm running in one direction and, and all the heroes are running into the building. So that's, uh, that's fantastic that we have officers in, in firefighting, certainly that do that. But I gotta tell you, this is my thirteenth year on the township committee, and I've seen something happen tonight that hasn't happened before. What, what's that? So, so we had PBA here after we, after we wrapped fire in NMLA. I don't recall that happening. I don't recall the governing body and the PBA in one room making a point of how well the agreement worked between township and the PBA. I don't remember. So the fact that we're both here and we have a great agreement between the PBA and the governing body, the people that, that, that served the benefit the most are the members of the Township of Middletown. Guys, I wanna thank you very much for that. I don't recall this happening before, though. So it just, it just goes to show the, and Mayor, what, thank you for your leadership and our administration as well, and the, and the PBA as well, the fact that we've all come together here today, since I, I just, I don't recall before. Says we've got a great agreement, and I appreciate everyone's support, so that's all I have for tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Committeewoman, Committeewoman Kratz?
Well, it's not easy to go second, it's really easy to go third.
Imagine going last.
Imagine going last, right? But we always find something. But just echoing the same, very same sentiments. We, we couldn't be more pleased, as, as you well know, both of my boys were police explorers. And it's, you know, we are blessed and fortunate to have such a dedicated force that makes sure that Middletown is indeed a safe place to live. And I, and I love and appreciate that so many of our officers work and live in town. And I think that makes, makes a big difference. So thank you for, for your service, and, and we really are so pleased. It certainly is a win-win for, for all parties, so it's fabulous. Um, also, just wanted to congratulate our, our North Track students, too, and our new officers, and also wanted to congratulate our class of twenty twenty-three. My son was one of, was one of our graduates this year, and it was, both graduations were really quite something, and it was nice to celebrate all of our students and all of their achievements this year, so fabulous. And just wanted to just also acknowledge, um, the senior center in Middletown had done something really quite fantastic. They have offered, their seniors, um, had offered words of wisdom for our seniors in high school. And I really thought that was really something quite special. So from one senior to another, they imparted their wisdom on, on the future and, and things to look for and qualities to have as they, as they imparted into the world, and that was really, really quite nice. So congratulations to all of them also. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor? Well, I have pages here. So I just wanna, we, we got a big day coming up here on Thursday. I know that Mayor's Sunday, but it's just important that, uh, we're filing, putting, everyone's in place here. Building's ready to go, right, Mayor?
Everybody's here.
Ready to go, so, uh, five to seven, I'd like to see everyone there.
Five eight, sorry.
It's five forty-five, right? Uh, who knows? Alright, I don't know, you just tell me it's time to go by now. Oh, yeah, cut them, sorry, that worked out for everyone. Well, the PBA guys, just, gentlemen, it was always, always an honor of working with you guys. You guys are truly the best, so thank all your officers, and you guys did a fabulous job. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, and again, you, you, Delta Coma hit me, and as soon as I looked in, he said, "What'd you get, a new number?" And he said, "Why?" "'Cause I texted you at twelve forty, and you still haven't responded." Like, I was still getting nervous that the, the agreement hadn't been approved, but then I looked back and saw that Royer had texted me at like ten o'clock saying it was all good. But, uh, but again, two true professionals, and led, led by the councilman. Just appreciate everything. Town Hall, hope everybody can be there for the ribbon cutting. Uh, it's been a long time coming. And I know we've been in here for a little while, but now that everyone is here, it is time to celebrate that, that achievement. So, uh, hey, I will end it there, I don't take up any more time. Uh, I'll open it up for a public comment. Any member of the public who should make a public comment may do so. This has to be state your name and address for the record, and then you keep your comments to five minutes. At four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. With that being said, any member of the public who should make a public comment? Yes, sir?
Good evening, my name is James DeRidere, two twenty-six Harmony Road. I'm appearing before the Township Committee Board a fifth or sixth time concerning the noise coming from the ice world. Ice rink. Ace Rank, former Middletown's from Cleveland College. On December seventh, the Planning Board approved with Mr. Sedimbrino a plan for renovations to Ice World, which included some sound abatement. It's been six months. Nothing has been done. He swore to the Planning Board under oath that he was the only one who could control the chiller in Rank One. You may recall those comments. And yet he constantly turns it up to full. And while I police, I, I sincerely appreciate the police, I really hate calling them at eleven o'clock at night with a noise complaint, which I'm.
Take the gloves off.
I've also called at six thirty in the morning on Saturdays because every week they plan on doing their landscape. I really don't like being woken up at six thirty to tremors and leaflets. Is it possible that the Township Committee could ask Mr. Havlin to at least reduce the timeline for the sound abatement, which he promised on December seventh, two thousand and two?
I think that's fair, right, Tony?
Yeah.
And can you get it to Mr. D, G, Arias?
Deverderris.
Deverderris, okay.
I mean, I know, yeah.
I, I know.
I've seen you at.
Almost half a dozen quarter boners.
Yes. As well as our nicest foremost picnics.
Yes.
And I'd rather only see you there.
Okay.
Not the person, but I don't like being.
I'm not.
I'm not trying to cause any difficulty for Mr. Havlin.
I.
Or the township.
I, I'm.
I just need some quiet.
I'm fairly certain that Committeeman Sedimbrino gave Mr. Havlin quite the earful at the Planning Board meeting. At least from the rumors I heard. Um, but, uh, but, uh, I think it's very fair to ask for the timeline, so tell him, can you get that? And pass that along? The only other thing I'll add, Mayor, is that there, there's a fifty dB max, max requirement, and if he hasn't, he hasn't complained with that, then that.
Yes.
Execute fine for that. Similarly, there's a noise ordinance start for weekends, I think it's, uh, eight, eight AM.
Yep.
Eight AM, so, uh, those would be pretty immediate.
And I've had to go over there to tell them, and when they ignored me, resulted in calling folks.
We'll be, we'll be sure to handle that for you. Thanks. Any other member of the public wishing to make, yes, Melanie.
Evening. Uh, Melanie Elmeyer, Green Tree Terrace, Lynn Croft. Um, Ted Maloney's not here, but I wanted to thank him for attending the June twelfth, uh, Valens Road Roundabout presentation by the Monmouth County Engineers.
Yep.
Um, and reviewing the design to rainy night. Um, the, the Lynn Croft Village Green Association had come to Middletown first to start this project, to introduce this idea, and get the ball rolling and, and connect you with Monmouth County, so we're very appreciative. And, um, it was, this was a huge step forward. This can now go to final design. Second, um, regards to garbage pickup, I've spoken before this committee a few times about starting, and now we're giving them a little more leeway, and I, I kinda feel like it's a slippery slope. So I'm wondering, um, if before the July meeting, we can get a list of what are considered the, the high traffic roads?
Yes.
So that we know which roads are affected?
We, we, uh, we went through quite an extensive, uh, conversations, multiple conversations with them. There's, there's factors that are, are not controlled by, by the township, right? You know, we wanna make sure those traffic gets picked up. Yes, we can absolutely provide you, it's, it has to be detailed in the ordinance, what roads are allowed and what ones aren't.
All right, good. I just wish there was a way for the bulk pickup, that there could be an app or a list for people to register, like, "I have bulk," and then they just go to those locations. They don't have to come down every single street searching for bulk, you know, if there's nothing there. I just wish that that, we could advance to that stage. A question about liquor licenses from that list, um, maybe this is a question for Mr. Mark Conti. Um, when Chris's Deli was sold to the county, they had some kind, maybe a packaged goods license or something, and I thought that the county had it and maybe sold it, and, but it is Middletown, so I'm not sure how that works. Like, where does that end up? Like, not on your list, it goes to some other list?
Well, still we are, but I don't know if they.
I think so.
It's still pocketed, so it's still out there available.
But, but it wasn't on the list of approvals for, because why?
Well, because it is a pocket license. I don't know.
Those are.
But there were inactive pocket licenses on here, I thought. There were four of them. There were four inactive pocket licenses on the list, the food circus.
There could be, there could be multiple reasons. There could be that they had their own, it could be that they didn't pay the fee. They didn't go online and pay the fee, so I don't know exactly why that's not.
We can find that for you.
We can. Yeah, I'd like to know who owns it and what its status is or where. Yes, Chris's Deli was, you know, owned by the county before it became Sterling River Park. And then my last question is, um, I got to the Hometown Township meeting, um, last week because I've been noticing, 'cause I walk, uh, County Road five twenty, um, every day, and I've been noticing they always have a patrol car pretty much, you know, a lot of the times, different hours of the day, on five twenty west of Crawford's Corner, Everett Road. Um, for some reason, that county road goes from two lanes, um, to, you know, one lane both, both ways to two lanes both ways. Um, and so widens as it crosses over Crawford's Corner, Everett Road, and then it narrows again at Christian Brothers Academy. And there's curb in the road there too. And, um, there's so much speeding in that area because I think people get frustrated as they're on a single road on a forty-five mile an hour road in Hometown or forty in Middletown, and then, and then they walk past them. So it, it's a dangerous situation, but there, there are some buffers because the walking path is, is, you know, a good distance from the road. Um, they also, the county had knocked down a lot of trees, so there's no, like, sightline, uh, distractions to kinda slow you down, any traffic calming. So they had, have repeatedly had a police officer there to, to check the speeding. And so I'm asking, you know, as far as Middletown, um, if I were to kinda research, uh, any of the, um, incidents in, in that area, because there have been several car accidents, especially approaching the high school. Um, if that is something that the police would consider, uh, to kinda keep an eye on, um, you know, random hours, maybe during rush hour and half during the day. Um, you know, you can hear the cars, you can see the cars. Um, it's an obvious problem that Hometown's recognized, so I'm wondering if it's something Middletown maybe even can coordinate with Hometown and kinda discuss.
Chief, if you wanna, uh, speak to the Hometown Chief about that? Okay.
Great.
Thanks, Melanie.
Thank you so much.
All right. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? John, come on down.
That's really ninety-one Burlington. Um, I, I just had a question without, kinda like, trying to find more information about it. Um, I work in, uh, Point Pleasant and, uh, kinda near where thirty-five goes in the Bayhead. And I noticed they have, the state has a, like a, a state pollinator area. They have like the, um, just makes it look nice, like they have the, the New Jersey native flowers on the, the sides of the roads on thirty-five. Um, I was just, I just wanted to ask, could, is this something Middletown could reach out to NJDOT about? About, um, maybe even asking Hometown or Haslett or, uh, the, the other municipalities if, if they would also be interested? If we try to get, like, state planning to have, um, like, wildlife pollinator areas.
Just on the side of the highway?
Yeah, like, yeah, like the side of the highway.
Before or after the bridge?
Uh, after the bridge.
It's after the bridge, after the bridge in Point, in Point Beach.
Oh, going into Bayhead?
Going into Bayhead, yeah. Just like.
Well, let me, let me take a look at it, and then I'll get back to you on it. 'Cause I, I'm not familiar with it, but if I, if I could see it, I'll probably take a picture on it or whatever.
I guess, normally when that happens, it, it's, uh, it's, uh, somebody just contacted the DOT and said, "Hey, we have a group who wants to create this pollinator,"
Sure.
"and they'll maintain it, and they get the DOT permission to do it." We can look into it.
Yeah. I'll take a look.
I was just wondering, 'cause I know, uh, I thought maybe.
Just designated my CFO as the chief pollinator. Oh, is it Paul Canetra, right?
No, that's.
Oh, that's.
That's the boss.
Yeah, all right. Uh, I'll take a look for you.
And, um, I just had one more question to add to that. Um, I was, uh, reading the master plan online. I know it's, I think it was a couple of months ago, they, they, uh, published online. Um, yeah, I was just curious about it. Is there anything, is there anywhere the Township Committee can put in it, like, a statement, like, I know, kinda summarizes, said like, they wanna reuse, kinda develop land already, which I totally agree with, but, um, is there anywhere we could put, like, uh, the township supports, like, preserve forests and farmland, I guess, as a part of our economy? For jobs or?
Don't say none of them. We, we're actually just about to put out an RFP for a new master plan, and there's an open space element in there already. And one of the new elements that's required by the state now is an economic element, which ties those two things together. Um, and so I'm, I'm positive that the new master plan is gonna be language addressing that. So, we should, we're gonna be going out for an RFP any day now, and, uh, we'll be starting on it in, in the next month or so.
Okay, great.
Public hearings where you can make exact, exact same comment.
Awesome. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Any member of the, any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and adjourn. Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Krantz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Heidl.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to.
Have a great day, everybody. Thank you all.